All right, George. This is the scheduled time for the meeting of the four school directors of the Panther Press School District. At this time, the elected board president and vice president are both absent. In accordance with Section 405 of the school code, in the absence of both elected officers, the board may elect a president pro tem for the purposes of the meeting, and that the appointment of that temporary officer shall be noted on minutes of the meeting. So it would be in order at this time for the board to make a motion to elect a temporary president or president pro tem.
So moved.
Well, you have to name somebody.
Tim Brown. I thought we had to move to do that. Never mind.
I have a motion for the election of Mr. Brown as the temporary president or president pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here? Not all of us in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Brown, you may.
Break the gavel.
All those made in favor, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your call?
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. D Francesco?
Mr. Giraud?
Mr. Gulick?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Item two, recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes from February 8th and February 11th. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. First. Opposed?
We have a presentations. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Baker. Do you want to introduce the staff?
I sure we can. So the Panther Press was won some awards through the state journalism competition. We have two of those members here. We have Amanda Crowe, who received an award, as well as Haiku Peters, who was part of the staff. We also have the advisor here, Mrs. Stacy Hetrick, to present to them their certificates from, I believe it was the PEA Journalism?
It's the Pennsylvania News Media Association.
I'm sorry, the Pennsylvania News Media Association.
Yep.
Do you want to tell us a little bit about it, maybe?
Yes.
And how well the kids did?
Yep. So every year, the Panther Press enters the Pennsylvania Student Keystone Media Competition. That is the state's most prestigious competition for high school journalism. I want you to know that many entries are submitted, and if the committee doesn't think they're good enough, they don't give. They just don't give an award. The winners were announced recently. We have four Student Keystone Press Awards. That's pretty unprecedented for us, particularly with the kind of year that we've all had. So we have Amanda Crowe and Sam Hetrick took first place, second place for best feature broadcast for Homecoming 2020. Amanda Crowe took first place for best sports coverage broadcast for the Cambridge Springs Girls Soccer Send-Off, which I hope some of you saw. She really did an excellent job on that. The entire staff for the 2019-20 year with editor in chief Sam Schellenberger took second place in ongoing news coverage for our COVID-19 Segretown shutdown stories. When schools shut down on the 13th of March, Sam Schellenberger was at my house the next day, trying to figure out what to do, what were we going to do? And we ended up going to the school and getting the computer and bringing everything that we needed to design back to my house, and decided to try and publish a story every day to capture what life was like for students during the pandemic. We published 30 stories in 30 days, which is pretty impressive. So we received second place for that. And then Sam Schellenberger and Brennan McRight, Brennan sent a thank you letter to the board that I hope was forwarded to you. He was not able to be here. They received honorable mention for video story for the work that they did on the Segretown Reverse Parade when parents were able to drive through, and we're very proud of these student journalists. So I guess I'd just like to take the opportunity to have Amanda come forward. She is accepting these as editor in chief on behalf of the Panther Press to deliver back to the staff. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Anything you want to say? Yes, no, any? Anna knows the speaking names.
She needs to write some reports.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, congratulations, and again, we're both ready. But I'm glad that we get to do student presentations again, to be perfectly honest, because I think it's our one chance really to get the students in front of the camera, if you will. We do have Haiku Peters here to make a presentation as a student delegation representative.
All right. Good evening. My name is Haiku Peters from the Panther Press, and I am here to update you about what's happening at Segretown High School. Junior Hunter Robinson has qualified for the state wrestling tournament in Hershey, which begins on Friday, March 12th. He will wrestle his first match at 8:30 a.m. The Panther Press will be giving updates throughout the day. Congratulations to the girls' basketball team on a stellar season. They compiled a 10-5 record, won their first playoff game against Mercer, and almost knocked off West Middlesex in a thrilling 48-46 D-10 semifinal game last night that came down to the final buzzer. Great season, ladies. Practice for spring sports begins on Monday, March 8th. The baseball team is looking forward to their trip to the Ripken Experience in Myrtle Beach later this month. The library will be open on March 19th for students to check out books. This is the first time books have been circulated during the school year. Librarian Mike Bruneman will be teaching students how to request books through their iPads, and the books will be delivered to students in their classrooms. Students who work in the CAD lab are looking forward to the new 3D printer that will be installed soon. This is part of the recent grant that Panther Press received with help from the National Tooling and Machining Association. Prong will be held May 15th. It will be on the Segretown campus and open to seniors only. Each senior may invite one guest. This year's theme is the fabulous 1980s. The Panther Press staff has been publishing more stories to the website and social media. Visit thepantherpress.com to check it out. Thank you for your time. We look forward to keeping you informed about events at Segretown High School. As always, you can follow us on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram at PantherPressS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody on the Zoom call that wants to do a PAEA report? I didn't receive one. Sometimes I receive them through the mail or text message. Registered citizens comments, we do have Ms. Hetrick to talk about librarians and librarians.
I would just have a copy of my remarks screen here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Stacy Hetrick. I am a taxpayer, a citizen of Segretown, a parent with two children at Segretown High School, a teacher, and a lifelong reader. I have a simple message. Several years ago, the board voted to eliminate three librarian positions from the district despite great public objection. I would like you to consider restoring those positions as soon as possible. We like coaches in this district, and we like sports. We have found ways to make sure sports seasons proceed, even with the dangers of COVID that are ongoing. And yet, our librarians have not circulated books this year, not one book. No safe way could be found to connect students with books, even though other districts were doing it. There are guidelines in place that make this possible, but we did not consider them because it wasn't a priority, apparently. Not only that, our librarians were co-opted to teach Panther Press cyber classes and perform other duties that would have kept them from delivering books to classrooms or making any other accommodations anyway. Let's get back to coaching. A librarian is the Division One coach of the most important sport in a school, building, literacy. Students who read succeed. It's that simple. The library is the reading gymnasium of the school, and librarians do far more than sign out books. They connect students with the right book at the right time. They teach media literacy in a time when finding and using credible sources is more complicated than ever. They manage our collections and grow them, shifting and adding as student interests and teacher projects change and evolve. And they provide a space that's devoted to the love of reading and knowledge. We took away the coaches of our most important sport. It's time to consider putting librarians back in all the building. The district spends money on many things. Why not librarians? The Panther Press mission statement says we want to develop lifelong learners. Librarians support that mission in a way no coach of any other sport can match. A librarian is not a frill. Give us back our Division One literacy coaches. As a community member and taxpayer, I will never understand how this happened. We all grew up with magical school libraries staffed by librarians every day. At least, I hope we did. I know I did at Maplewood Elementary and Maplewood High School, and a bookmobile in the summer. Cutting those positions was a mistake. We have, we move mountains for our athletes. Let's do the same for our readers. Please consider restoring librarian positions and bringing back the magic only librarians can provide. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your attention, and thank you as board members for all you do to support learning in our district. Respectfully submitted as public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue with the agenda. Athletic committee, recommend approval to accept the resignations from the following coaches. On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval to employ Greg Gushat as an assistant softball coach at Maplewood Junior-Senior High School.
On behalf of the committee, I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the athletic travel as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
You may have noticed that I eliminated my moratorium on out of district travel. Just wanted to bring that up. Cases are getting lower, and the weather's getting nicer, and things seem to be going in the right direction, so I'm going to roll the dice.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the athletic travel as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
You may have noticed that I eliminated my moratorium on out of district travel. Just wanted to bring that up. Cases are getting lower, and the weather's getting nicer, and things seem to be going in the right direction, so I'm going to roll the dice.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Education committee, Mr. Brooks chairman, we got an education update at the work session. Item B, recommend approval to submit the attached job training and education programs grant application titled Investment in Career Ready Technology Education. Accept award and allocate funds as outlined in the application. Additionally, indicate that Dr. Glass will authorize to sign the contract in question, and that has been attached. It's wordy because hopefully it covers everything so we can sign it and send this thing tomorrow. On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Any discussion? All in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
As we said in the work session, this was in large part due to the efforts of Senator Brooks. We will send her a thank you note tomorrow. I spoke with her the other day again and thanked her, but I truly do appreciate her thinking of Panther Press and reaching out to us to make sure we are aware of this. Thank you again, Senator Brooks. Item C, recommend approval of the attached 2021-22 school year calendar. On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Programs of study, recommend approval of the attached 21-22 elementary and secondary programs of study. On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? I'm going to bring up a fact that I've been through this a couple times, and I did not see anything about economics. I have a concern that economics has been possibly dropped. I think that's a very important subject, and I guess I have problems approving anything that we're dropping. I mean, I'd like to know, have a reason why we're doing what we're doing, or I know government's in there, but I think economics is just as important. How are we going to get our students educated in the economics side?
The way that it's done currently with government and economics are set up as one semester courses. So we worked through with the principals by making the government course a full year course that allows them to lock it into the schedule a little better with scheduling. And the idea is that the economics portion of what was instructed in school will be integrated into the government course. Because the government, the way that we do it now, the government piece is taught for one semester, and the kids are scheduled to the second semester or another, to economics. And they had done that before for all the different half-credit offerings, so that they could balance kids around. By making a full course, the way I understand it is it'll keep one teacher with that same group of kids the whole time, and it's not a separate course, but it's going to be taught throughout that timeframe for that year.
I think the other issue was that the government, American government, you know, if you take a look at the textbook out there, it is an entire year course. There's enough material, obviously, with that primary resource. We have taught, we can teach economics. We can, you know, we can add it as an elective, whether it's AP Economics or Economics. I think the AP goes more into macro. We can certainly get those resources. But the economics, like a primary resource of an economics textbook cannot be covered in a semester. There was one primary resource textbook in 2009 that was titled Government and Economics. I don't think the teacher reviewed that. I didn't get any feedback as far as, you know, it has to be taught together. It's not required. I hear what you're saying, Tim.
Well, I mean, I'm not a teacher, so I mean, I guess I'm not speaking out of term because I'm just not sure how the textbook is taught. And as far as curriculum, I haven't really seen what kind of curriculum, what's in place for what they're supposed to do per day, per week, per month, where they're supposed to be. And I know when I went to school, we had government and we had economics. Now, I know that was a long time ago, but they did it then. I embrace my economics class. I learned a lot in that class. I just have problems saying, yeah, that's okay, let's just do it. We're going to have economics for a month. There's no way you're going to convince me that economics in a month is going to get these kids prepared for what's outside this building.
And I believe our teaching will probably be on that same idea.
See, that's one word I have, you believe. I can't take that.
I know. But from, saying from there, once we get this approved and they have their primary resource, we'll be able to get them together and create that, what you're talking about is like a pacing guide, scope and sequence, that we can ensure that all the topics of the basic economics is laid out of when and where and how.
So, but you're saying basically that there's going to be like a month of economics now there's high school career.
Well, I think economics is taught in, you're too.
Well, no, that's what I'm trying to get through. I want to make sure, you know, that the kids are getting, you're asking us to vote on some, and I take your word for it. But I have to question it. I mean, this was kind of given to us a couple few days ago, and we're trying to, this, our vote is what decides what the students get taught. And I want to make sure that our vote is right for these kids, and I'm just not confident in that.
I think my question comes in. I understand the idea of providing it to and having economics under the umbrella of the government. I'm just curious kind of how much, how much economics.
So if you look at the program, if you look at this page on a program of study, you'll see that in the secondary, this is what's required. So this is what we require as graduation requirements, and it's 25.5.
What page?
Eight. So these are our graduation requirements. The items that are, have the asterisks are required courses within those subject areas. So you can see that, you know, a student is required four years of ELA, nine through 12, and of course, they can take AP as substitutes, et cetera. Of course. So after Algebra, we open it up to students. You may say, hey, geometry, every kid should have geometry, right? But we don't require the course entitled Geometry specifically. Health and PE, those are state requirements. We're saying that we are required to teach Biology. We have a Biology Keystone. Kids should probably learn Physics, especially if they're going down the road to the tool and die shops, right? We don't require Physics. We don't require Chemistry. When we get to Social Studies, we require U.S. History 2. So what we've done, the materials are out there, and we'll continue to look at it. We had American Cultures 1, 2, and 3. Now, we're being very prescriptive in our elementary program 4, 5, 6, and we're going, eighth grade is American History 1, then the American History 2. So obviously, there is a component of Economics that is woven in there as well. Then we go, we require World History, which the book is enormous, the content, we could teach the entire world history in one year, to the best of our ability, right? And then we go into Government. So we're saying that those starred subjects are required by the district, all right? And that is, we have to update our policy for these three, but the other ones are in there. The other ones are written in the curriculum. We can all agree that kids need to know Geometry, like how do you get through life without Geometry, right? But we both.
Depends on your field.
Right. So what we're also saying is, you know, we haven't designated Economics as, we've split it up. It was Government and Economics, and it was a semester of Government and a semester of Economics. Both of those primary sources definitely garner a year's worth of study. If the board has some suggestions and things they'd like us to take back and look at, we can certainly do that. If, the only thing we did talk about, I apologize, gentlemen, we did talk about, you know, we can add to the program of studies and subtract from the program of studies every year. What you really don't want to mess with is the courses that are required, because as kids matriculate through those four years, you continue to change them. Now you've got classes that have these different requirements. But our graduation credits have stayed the same. That was a policy we changed a year or two ago. But we could add courses here, and we certainly can take courses away. We've deleted some courses out of here that didn't have interest, or that were taught differently, or in very different manners from all the three districts. You know, we're trying to make sure that a Panther Press graduate, regardless of what high school, all have the same learning opportunities and same primary resources and access to materials that everybody has. We're trying to move away from, hey, I really like the history of Chinese civilization, so even though it's in there, I'm going to devote a lot of time and attention to that in my World History class. So we're trying to make sure, and the next component of this is the scope and sequence document that Mr. Newman went through. We also realize that a lot of the curriculum that we're looking at and working with is from 2004. We've had comments about our science curriculum really needing to be revised and upgraded this year because, you know, we're moving into the next gen science standards, which were two science standards adoption ago. The last time, we really took a deep dive and a critical look at our programs, not a program of studies, but our curriculum. You know, we spent the last year or two on ELA and are still moving through that and struggling with those growing pains. I think we're getting a lot better, but we still need to continue to work on that scope and sequence. So certainly, we don't want the board to rubber stamp everything that we bring to you, and we can appreciate that. So I'll stop and let you guys.
Is there, is there something that you could show us, Mr. Newman, of a syllabus, a scope and sequence of how, and I know it's just not Economics, and there's, well, as I say, I know, but there's seven other board members, right? You know, have you guys gone through this and doubt? Any other questions? I mean.
No, I think you have a very valid point.
I just, as I look through here, I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think you have a very valid point, and, you know, my bad, because when I looked through it, I didn't notice that. Now, my question for somebody, Dr. Glass or Mr. Newman. In the past, have we taught Government for only a half a year?
Yeah.
One semester?
Okay.
And we taught Economics for one semester?
Half.
Okay. Why was that, why did that need to be changed? In my opinion, I'm excusing for, but in my opinion, Government can be taught in a semester. I mean, I taught, and I'm pretty positive they can get all the highlights in one semester. And I do agree with him. These kids need Economics every bit as much as they need Government when they leave this place. So I thank him for noticing that. Again, I didn't notice it, but I'm with him. I'm not pleased about that. Is it possible, rethink it?
I guess anything's possible.
Anything's possible. Well, I guess the thing of it is, I just, I'm not, I won't go for this right now because I want to see something in there, and I don't, I need more encouraging words than should be, or we'll see, or we'll try. I need something, this is going to be the sequence. This is going to be, we're done with the assuming and all that stuff. We can't do this anymore because that doesn't work out for us.
We've got to have something more concrete.
Concrete. So.
That was the best.
Hold on now. That was an accident.
That would be fun.
So what's.
Like, my feeling, just to jump in real quickly, I agree with everything Tim said. I think that as a board, we've consistently, for the last six months or so, been asking for more civics and more things about the government. So I think that's kind of what was happening here. And since we started talking about this, just scrolling through, I see we're covering Economics, and not in depth as if a whole class, but in World History and in U.S. Government, so it's included in the curriculum. So I think we kind of have to decide, you know, do we want to cut more civics out to add Economics? Do we want to try to boost the Economics in the middle? And if, is there a reason that we need to approve this this month, or could it be moved back? We, we're in March, we're typically scheduling by now.
Okay.
I don't want to get hung up at the same time. I, I mean, even if we called the course U.S. Government and Economics, I mean, you want us to make sure that, you want a standalone course, do we want a standalone, or do you just want to ensure that we have a deep dive into Economics? I think the second would be what I'm thinking, is like, if traditionally, we've had a year, and we taught Government and Economics, it doesn't matter if the course is called Government and Economics, or if it's two courses, one called Government, one called Economics, as long as the Economics is being covered.
You're right, but I want to know how much Economics is being covered and how they're being held accountable for what they're teaching.
And again, you know, just to go back to what I was saying, is, you know, we also want more civics taught. So the more Economics we teach, the less civics is taught.
So I guess, do we have, do we have an actual, just Economics teacher and an actual?
It depends on what kind of Economics you're talking about, depending, depends on who can teach it under the CSBGs, whether it's Economics like a business, like a BCIT teacher business, or whether it's Economics and Social Studies aspect. What they do, there's two different books, and there's two different theories and tracks. So you could call it U.S. Government and Economics. It could be one class, one course, with multiple resources. We would have to be careful, I believe, in how we weave the scope and sequence in there and how we write the curriculum. And, you know, looking at a lot of the resources in current curriculum, a lot of these government classes follow a very similar path in the areas that they teach. Certainly, we can look into it. Right now, we teach U.S. Government, or what do we call it, Civics and Economics, or U.S. Government and Economics. It's a semester of one, then a semester the other. You get .5 credits and a different grade for each one, usually the same teacher. So on my schedule, it says Government and Civics, but it's all taught in the same period by the same teacher in the same class. They don't really, they don't really move around the schedule. They're both abutted against each other.
My guess, you answered my next question. If it's the same teacher. If it's the same teacher teaching both, then, you know, I guess we can call, however you want to call it, if you want to just leave it Government, but there still has to be time for adequate amount of Economics.
Mm-hmm. It's just a matter of what we're going to call it. How would it, how would it affect the scheduling?
Well, we would, we would change, we would change the curriculum as we're writing the curriculum. And again, you gotta remember, if you're writing the curriculum, the scope and sequence, making sure that each of those teachers have, and students have access to the same learning materials, and when you put that scope and sequence together, so at the end of the course, we know that every kid's got the same, the same knowledge.
But for scheduling, it's a required course. Don't you just sign them up for it? It doesn't matter what we decide to call it. I don't understand why that affects scheduling. Maybe I missed something.
I'm sorry.
The question was, what if we waited till next month? And the answer was.
Oh, no, scheduling kids.
It'll affect scheduling.
Scheduling kids.
Yeah. For the classes.
Tom, when do you typically start to schedule?
February.
So, and that's pretty typical. We can wait, you know.
Well, let me ask you this. Can we, can you give us the information within a timely manner? And can we have a special voting meeting? We're gonna have two weeks, not that I want to do this again, but, I mean, I don't mind the extra money, so.
I hate to hold the progress, but at the same time, like, as a district, we, especially the administration, but everyone's focus has been so much on trying to get us caught up and up to speed, and heading in a good, consistent direction with our schools, and I would need to make this change, and regret it any year.
Let me put it this way. If there's this much conversation, I don't think we should vote on it tonight. I think you should, I think, well, I, I think so much to stay away.
Well, I haven't had a satisfactory answer on why it was changed.
And quite honestly.
Bill, you raised your hand. Did you have something?
I'm not sure I'm allowed to speak, because I just, I'm looking at the rules. The Dr. Glasspool has up there, and it literally has Government Economics in there twice, which implies that it's getting equal weighting anyhow. So, it applies to me that if the wording is legitimately saying that it's supposed to get equal force. So, you could add the name, simply add Economics, US Government and Economics, and leave everything else the same, and I think you're accomplishing what you're after. I mean, if you look at that second line.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
The nature of the American system of Government slash Economics, that implies equal balance. The next sentence, actual workings of American Government and Economics as related items. It sounds to me like it's exactly what we've done, we've just morphed it into a one-credit course, then two half-credits. I don't think anything's different.
Then there's no accountability.
Thank you.
As how much, how much the future.
Well, I think.
It's a semester, we know.
You could add the word, you could, system of Government and Economics equally. I mean, you could add a simple language to fix that, if that's the, just a suggestion.
Okay.
But the language won't help us, well, hold the teachers accountable to how much.
Not until you get a scope and sequence.
And I guess that's, that's gonna be my next thing, is, the words that I've heard doesn't give me the confidence that I need to say if this is gonna happen. And I don't care if I hurt feelings or not, but the, well, yeah, should, those words do not cut it with me. We need something to say, they are expected to do this, this, and this. And if they don't do that, there's consequences, move on.
Are there, so, are there two different things? One is, you know, the names of the courses so that we can schedule them, and the other is the content, the scope and.
Scope and sequence, yes.
The scope and sequence.
We're talking about two different things.
So, we could approve this course, and then, you know, have another meeting, an educational meeting, to get us up to speed on it, and then ensure that this is in there. And whether, we could call the class Bob, your uncle, as long as what's in there is, you know, what we want.
I'm really glad we're having a conversation about, about education. Makes me feel good.
Oh, yeah. Me too. This is awesome.
But honestly, I don't, I don't want you guys to approve something, and we're having this much discussion.
I want to make a motion that we indefinitely postpone this matter.
Two weeks, a month?
I was gonna say. Indefinitely. It's in rules. That's what I have to do. You can't table something unless there's something more important on the agenda. You have to ask for an indefinite postponement, and then, the obvious rules.
You can, you can postpone it to a certain day.
Yeah. I was gonna say, let's get this.
April.
No, if we can do this in a couple of weeks, let's do this in a couple of weeks. We could schedule emergency meeting, well, I'm just saying. I'm talking to the Board right now. I would rather come back in in two weeks and say, let's have a quick discussion on it, make it public, and vote on it, so our teachers and staff, the administration can get moving on it as quickly.
Yeah, I'm positive of that, too, as long as that's enough time for them.
Well, and that, I mean, that was my suggestion, or if they say, "Hey, we can have it done by Thursday next week," I don't care.
Can we have a better idea on the scope and sequence and things in a couple of weeks, or is that something that would be further?
Better for April, to be honest with you. There's a lot going on.
Now, is there a way?
I want to go back to the old way. Could we?
No chance, no reason to change it.
Has everybody had a chance to go over the rest of the?
Did we share?
I mean, it was tough to go through all of this. And like I said, the timeframe, whichever, this year's stakes anyhow, there's no, but.
I would rather.
I'm trying to go through all this, and I'm sure everybody else is to ask questions. Most of it, to me, looks great, but I just see a couple of things that just didn't.
There were more changes in the Science. I honestly, I don't want you guys to approve something that you haven't, that you don't feel comfortable with, that I don't think you should do.
Well, the Science, and, well, I was gonna, with any of these, not just Science, but any of these, is there gonna be actually, or I'm sorry, an actual curriculum written? Or are we just gonna give?
We have written curriculum. I just think it's been a while since Science and Social Studies have updated their curriculum.
Okay. Is there any plans for these, any updates on any curriculum? Or are we just gonna hand books to teachers and say, "Here you go, teach us, you gotta get through, that's many chapters in X amount of time."
No, we're gonna, we're gonna put the scope and sequence together, I mean, again, and modify what we have. I don't think you can throw it all out. The standards haven't changed all that much in Social Studies.
Oh, no, that's.
Science, they have changed, but, you know.
But I have to ask these questions, because I don't know, you know, this is out of my.
And we can still get scheduling done if we push it back a month.
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Baker, and I'm gonna put him on the spot for these here.
So, let me.
No pressure, buddy.
There is none. So, one thing about the, the way we used to do it was, we had 1220 was the code for Government, 1221 was the code for Economics. So, when you have two separate codes when you schedule, sometimes 1220 doesn't go with 1221. So, 1220 could be first period, but 1221 schedules seventh period, because the kid has a hole. By making it one single course, be it you call that Government Economics like we had four or five years ago, and just made it one number, that means you don't have the Government here, Economics here, you have them all together because they're tied together. That's why, that's what makes the scheduling part easier. The same thing is for various other courses that we made from a semester to a year, because it's easier to schedule. And it's also a problem when you have several singletons, meaning several classes that only 10 kids are gonna take.
Right.
So, to schedule that in then to your master, it ties up a period that you could be teaching something else.
So, I was to clarify, pushing this back to an April vote, what does that do for scheduling?
That pushes my guidance counselor getting out into their classes to May. Because I can't schedule without a approved program of studies. I can't have my guidance counselor going out to a classroom, saying, "Hey, kids, here's gonna be the courses," and.
They could start with every, they could do everything but.
Everything but.
As it sounds right now.
Everything but, social studies.
So, and which would only be, you know, juniors, one.
It would only affect the juniors, and that this year's juniors.
And regardless of what that course is titled and how it's written, it's required. So, you could just say, "Social Studies 11 for right now."
Is going to be.
And we could flesh out the rest of the details.
Well, you said, I just, we went from a semester of each, now we're saying, last, Mr. Newman says, is maybe a month of Economics, so I'm confused how, we can go from a semester to a month and get accomplished.
Efficiency.
Yeah, exactly. I, I mean, we use Economics every day. Anybody that's living, breathing in this country, use Economics every day. We use Government also, so.
Are you okay if we approve the program of studies as US, instead of US Government, I call it Social Studies 11 right now? I mean, is there any other concern with anything else in the program of studies?
Well, what I've gone through so far, I guess.
Do you need more time?
No.
I don't want you to make a decision that you, that you don't feel comfortable making.
I mean, I'm embarrassed to say, but once we get the math stuff, I'm kind of, I'm not gonna lie. And the electives, I mean, I guess that was just the thing that caught my eye that wasn't there.
So, where are we, we're in discussion still?
Still in discussion.
Alright, still in discussion.
So.
Down.
What's the rest of the Board then? We want to approve this with the?
Don't we have a motion and a second?
You do.
Oh, we're still in discussion.
I'm sorry, I thought we were still discussing.
Yeah, we're still in discussion. So.
Not for a motion and a second?
No.
Well, every time, you motion, then you second, then you discuss.
Oh, we're discussing.
Table.
Yeah.
Right now, right now, there, there isn't a motion, the table, or the postpone to a certain time. We had some discussion about that, but no one has made a motion, and nor has that been seconded at this point.
Okay, I made the motion, I thought Tim seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry, I fall against, I thought you did. I, I don't think, I mean, as a president of town, I'm not gonna second anything. That's.
You need to second one. Because personally, I think that if, like, like, I understand the importance of it being, you know, standalone Economics, and there are decisions on Government versus Economics, and what is more important, what isn't. You know, they're both important, but there's a finite amount of time that we have to teach it. I don't want scheduling to go later than it has to.
Exactly.
And I think that if we do call this Social Studies 11, which is a better name than what I suggested, then we can get the scheduling part of it going, and we can suss out the details of it, toward the Board is comfortable with that. Like, we can make this class what we want it to be, it's just we need a name of it to fit in the slots, so we can schedule it as of right now.
That goes back to, do we want to approve something, and hope the details are what we want?
The detail, it's up to us, it's up to us to be responsible. You know, if next month, we come back and no one mentioned Economics, that's on us.
I'd say, in a couple of weeks, we have an education meeting, and Ken is gonna be responsible to start showing us some of the information we're looking for. He may not, you're not gonna have it all, but you should have a very good start on it, and a very good idea of where we're going with this. I mean, you all been working on this for a while, so you should have a basic understanding of how we're gonna go and what you expect. I mean, you're in charge, it's your teachers have to do what you tell them, and you should be starting to lay that groundwork for, I almost said concrete, too. Start laying that groundwork for them. So, we should be able to look at this. I mean, I don't, we definitely don't want to micromanage or anything, but I'm gonna start questioning certain things, and the rest of the Board's gonna start questioning certain things, and this is the one that I'm questioning. We went from a half, half a semester down to, or I'm sorry, semester down to maybe a month. I'm just concerned about that, so. If the rest of the Board's okay of approving this, I'll back that, but we need something, you know, whatever, two, three weeks.
A second sequence.
We'll have an education meeting.
And I think that, you know, personally, I would still vote for it, as long as we follow up on it. I support the idea of an education meeting here, and then I support the idea of following, just ensure that all subjects are given enough credit. You know, the two sentences we have here, they don't say whether it's a month, or it could be, you know, five months, you know? So, it's up to the district and the teachers to determine what's in there. And I think, we call it Social Studies 11, and we make sure that what's in there is what we want in there, and then we can move forward without stalling even further for scheduling. And, you know, Bob, it doesn't make a good point if, if we don't follow up on it, it could just be Government, or it could just be Economics. So, it's up to us to have an education committee meeting and things like.
All right, let's plan an education meeting.
This, this document's written for the kids to help with scheduling.
Right.
Obviously, some have more, some have less. I mean, we've, we've done this over the past two or three years. You know, you'll notice that English has a, is verbose. Some of them are, are, you know, very short. I found one that was two sentences. Certainly, we can do a better job of beefing those course descriptions up, that's on us. It's not supposed to rehash the entire curriculum or provide a scope and sequence, it's to help the students understand what they're taking. Certainly, we can talk more about the Government, and we can work on this. I would say, don't pass this then. If you guys are uncomfortable, this is too important, in my opinion.
Mr. Newman, if we would rename it Government and Economics, could you assure the Board that there would be one semester of Economics and one semester of Government?
Yeah, whatever you name it, I mean, my steps are now, I'm gonna go back to the History or Social Studies Department, and look at what they have now for their two courses, and when we look at the courses, and then have them work through with me for the scope and sequence. We didn't create a scope and sequence yet, because this is a new full-year course, we never set it up that way as a full-year course, so the scope, there was never a need for scope and sequence, as everybody's pointed out before, because it was first semester was this, and second semester was this. That's where we, I'm gonna go through and have that discussion, and have that set up.
So, you can't guarantee.
Not until we write the scope and sequence. But now, I know that's the direction you want to go, and that's what my next step's gonna be.
Why it needed to be changed?
Well, change is, change is important, I mean, it's just the fact that, I had, you know, Mr. Hector pointed out, it is in there, trying to read everything as quickly as we can, and thank you, but it may be just not seeing that raise more questions, you know? Like I said, I, I just, it's too important to let these kids go through and them losing out or something.
So, where are we with the motion, second, the table, the vote?
You have a, you have a motion to approve the motion as presented. There isn't, there's been discussion about tabling, but that hasn't been formalized as a motion. There's been some discussion about amending the motion to retitle the course, that hasn't been made into any motion at this point. And there's been a motion to approve it with a title change, and with the idea that the administration will come back with a discussion on the scope and sequence of the course. So, right now, the motion on the floor is as presented.
So, can I withdraw that motion? Because that seems to have zero legs. No one wants to approve it as. So, I withdraw the.
Just start over.
I, I think you have the ability, if I'm understanding the sense of the Board, you could have, you can amend the motion on the floor to, to do two things. Amend to retitle the course, whether you want to call it Social Studies 11, or US Government and Economics, and to direct the administration to bring the Board the scope and sequence for the course at the April meeting, or some such other time as you want to direct. If you did those two things by way of amendment, I think you might have the plavia to look for.
Alright.
Yeah, you know, I'll amend the, I'll amend the motion, it's Social Studies 11.
Let's stick with that.
Sure. That seems, again, better than my idea. And then, the description of the course doesn't determine the scope and sequence. So, we're not approving scope and sequence, we're not, we're just, this is what the catalog is, this is what we're offering.
And we'll fix it.
The advantage that I see from, from Tom is, to kind of address your point, is that it's easier for scheduling, because when you have one semester, a one semester class, then they don't line up, and not everyone can get in.
Sorry, guys.
Jeff, what was the motion? You were amending your motion.
I'm amending my motion that US government.
It's gotta be amended. All right. Not all that. I would like to amend the motion that the course, US government, be changed to Social Studies 11.
Temporarily.
Temporarily.
Temporarily, yes.
And to direct the board to provide scope and sequence.
Direct the administration to provide details regarding the scope and sequence.
You don't want us doing it.
Am I correct that the board does not need to approve scope and sequence per se?
You guys approve curriculum.
Yeah.
You guys approve the curriculum.
We do approve scope and sequence.
Course of study.
Of course. No, but we're approving course of study without a scope and sequence.
Well, we always have.
But when the scope and sequence comes, it won't come up to a vote.
Well, it'll be in, it'll be in the new, the revised curriculum.
You approve curriculum.
Could already be pre-approved, though. Because we're approving it now, that means when you guys come up with the course of study, it'll automatically be approved because we're approving it now.
You're approving the program of study for the purposes of scheduling.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, the curriculum will be another.
That'll be another.
That'll be another good time.
Yep.
That'll be another motion.
So can I second his motion then to change course of study name?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll second him. Because I like the scope of changing and include both in the one, so it could be more time spent together instead of separating.
All right, so we have a motion.
You have a motion to amend.
Motion to amend, and Brian seconded the motion to amend. Do we have to discuss?
Any more discussion? You have the ability to discuss.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call. Roll call. Okay, we're gonna roll call it.
Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Gulek?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
No.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Valeski?
Yes.
Okay, item E, recommend. Sorry, from a parliamentary standpoint, what you did is now amend the motion. You have to vote on the main motion.
I apologize, thank you.
Oh, you just amended, all you did right was to amend the motion. Now you have to vote on the motion as amended.
Okay.
Amendment passed, okay? Sorry.
All right.
Our normal presidents, these meetings go much slower.
Well, I'll be fired if you say that.
Yeah, let's just go to the one question, please. But we have to have a motion?
I would.
No.
No.
On the floor, do a roll call.
No one say motion again.
Motion. Well, we made a motion to amend that motion, so now.
So now you're voting on the main motion as amended?
Do we need a motion to second one now?
Nope, it's already on the floor.
All right.
Okay, uh, Brooks?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gulek?
No.
Johnston?
No.
Lynch?
Yes.
Valeski?
Yes.
You're good now.
Item E, recommend approval of a settlement agreement with student A.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, recommend approval of the attached agency cooperative agreement with Crawford County Human Services.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, recommend approval of the attached letter of agreement with the Meadows for 21 through 23 school years.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
All those. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, recommend approval for MHS to discard the attached list of outdated books in accordance with policy 706.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, recommend approval to operate and staff the 2021 extended school year program as needed.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, chairman. Item A, just information, we had a discussion, I mean, the facilities committee a while ago. We talked about the GISA and permitting issues at the work session. We're still moving in a positive direction and on track and on budget. Uh, item B, recommend approval of the attached one-year contract extension agreement with PM Bus Incorporated. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached two-year contract extension with Waste Management Incorporated. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item D, recommend approval of the attached two-year preventive maintenance extension for pet room equipment. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of the purchase of a van from Hondreul Ford, uh, pricing per the PA Co-Stars 26 contract. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item A, recommend approval of adjusted payment to PM Bus Incorporated in the amount of $312,339.89 for April and May '21 due to an additional van run. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, recommend approval of following student transportation drivers for PM Bus Incorporated. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasuries reports.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached dispersals.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, recommend approval of the 2122 Northwest Tri-County Intermediate Unit Budget in the amount of $62,555,592, and further approve the district's contribution to the general operating fund in school improvement service budgets for the 2122 fiscal year in the amount of $64,568.88.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E D, recommend approval of the attached bond issuance compliance procedure resolution for the post-issuance compliance responsibilities.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ken? Can you turn this one back on? Did that just go out, or is that it always been on?
It hasn't been on.
It's been on.
Oh, wow, why didn't someone say something?
It's okay.
I apologize, I was wondering why everybody's looking there. All right, I just, I apologize for the distraction. Item E is just for information, the 2020 bond issuance scheduled for Thursday, the 18th. Uh, the finance committee met on the 18th at 5:00 in the boardroom. Um, just so the public knows, we locked bond rates in at 1.75%. And that is extremely good, it will be a savings for taxpayers now in the future. Personnel Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, recommend approval to accept the fallen resignations with the intent to retire. Mary Manano, Larry Nicolazie, Diane Hornstein, Debbie Britton, Dinah Estes.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, recommend approval of the unpaid leave of absence for the fallen employees.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, recommend approval of the attached Act 93 agreement effective July 1, '21, and ending on June 30, '26.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, recommend approval to hire Kristen Eckert as business manager effective April 1, '21 through June 30, '24. $90,000 per annum salary, other benefits as outlined in the attached agreement.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, recommend approval to create the following positions in accordance with the attached job descriptions. Please note, the assistant business manager is a change from accountant. The number two is simply a change in the title, number three is also a change in the title. Uh, number four is already a position that we have in the district, but we need to add an additional position. So I just wanna make sure that the board, as well as the public, are aware that we're not adding additional positions more along the lines of changing current position descriptions.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to appoint Cynthia Paxson as the assistant business manager effective July 1, '21 through June 30, '25. $62,500 per annum salary, other benefits as outlined in the attached agreement.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, recommend approval to appoint Denise Gabel as the administrative assistant to the superintendent. Personnel with effective date to be determined by the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, recommend approval to employ Courtney Whitman as a two-hour cafeteria employee assigned to Cambridge Springs Elementary School effective March 15, '21.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, recommend approval to employ Susan Flaman as a temporary four-hour cafeteria employee assigned to Sagertown Elementary School effective December 7, 2020.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item J, recommend approval transfer Aaron Kiznickis. Kiznicki, thank you, to a head custodian position assigned to Maplewood Junior Senior High School effective March 8.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Recommend approval of the SIC Bank Committee's recommendations as follows.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
L, recommend approval to employ the following support staff substitutes.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All approved?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item M, recommend approval of the following volunteers effective for the 2021 school year, 1 through 8.
On behalf of the committee, some move?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Policy Committee, Mr. DeFrancesco, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached policies as listed. We have the committee make that recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have some discussion, I apologize for anything. On policy 106.1.
106.1?
606.1, you mean?
The one about, um, this one. 06.1, my bad. At the bottom, it says that you cannot attend, uh, executive session electronically. And in other areas, it says, like, except under extraordinary circumstances. And I think of some of our executive sessions we had, like during COVID, et cetera, like that, where we're discussing personnel and safety issues, if this would be a hindrance to us should something like this happen again, um, or not. You know, I, I understand the concerns, you can't, um, guarantee that no one's in the room with you during executive session and things like that. But, you know, I know that we, we were all on electronic executive sessions before, and as elected officials, we should be responsible to who's around us. And there's no guarantee that when we walk out of here, someone doesn't say, oh, we're changing executive session either. So I don't know if we need to add extraordinary circumstances, or if I'm overthinking it.
I'm just speaking, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I'm, as a member of the committee, this was discussed.
Okay.
And, um, it was, I mean, even, people could even hear accidentally what you're saying in executive session. And I would say you're right, if the entire board has to have an executive session via Zoom, that would be okay. But if seven or eight people could be here, and the other one can't, then I don't think that he or she should be able to attend virtually.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, it's just fine, I just wanted to make sure that that's allowed under the policy, because it doesn't say, you know, it doesn't say one or another.
Well, does it allow for, God forbid we have another pandemic, if the entire board would have an elective, uh, executive session via Zoom, that would violate the policy, correct?
Well, my, my, my own assessment would be that if, if we face the pandemic situation again, that, uh, the board could vote to suspend the policy.
Okay.
That would allow, you know, so I think it'd be okay.
I think that's also why they.
That's a valid.
That we added unless, unless circumstances are extraordinary, right?
Right.
It says extraordinary a lot of times, but it didn't say in that particular spot. So I just wanted, I just wanted clarification.
Okay. So this would apply to down here?
Okay.
That's how I read it, I mean, I may be incorrect there.
Right. Okay, I think you're right.
Okay?
Thank you.
It's under, good, so.
All right. Kiss. All right, that was discussion.
Yeah, we can vote.
All those in favor?
Under a.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B is not a voting, uh, matter, just first reading of policies. Uh, mostly financial, uh, 1 through 5. No changes in policies, 1, 2, and 3 under the bottom, they're annual changes, we do federal programs. Um, policy C was repealing the purchases budgeted 611, which we included in, uh, 610, purchases subject to bid quotation. Uh, State Schools Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Uh, we have a committee meeting scheduled for next week. Uh, Crawford County Career and Technical Report, Mr. Johnson, representative, any report tonight?
Uh, nothing, I'm just checking, uh, this one report that the Good Law Firm is now, uh, soliciting for Career Tech Center after our meeting. Nothing earth-shattering, just wanted to report that Quinn Law Firm is now soliciting for Career Tech Center after our meeting.
Thank you, Intermediate Unit 5, Mr. Brooks, representative, any report this evening?
The single audit report from June 30th was approved for being in compliance. And it was brought up that there's, this is similar, I think everywhere, that there's difficulty filling all positions, that there's upcoming teacher shortages or current teacher shortages and difficulty filling all those positions. They brought up, it's something that was brought up during the Panther Press update. They talked about the first 3D-printed home was built on Long Island. And it came in, the average new build is $600,000, and this came in at $299,999. I rounded that up one. And another thing I thought was interesting they brought up was that, left unaddressed, lost classroom time can have long-term effects on student success and the economy as a whole from the pandemic, they estimate that by 2040, lost time in the classroom for the current class could be a loss of $110 billion per year and could reduce overall gross domestic product. This figure also includes the high school dropout rate that's increasing, that could account for $11 billion per year. So I thought that was interesting, just as we don't necessarily think about how this could affect us economically.
Thank you. PSBA, the slated for, Mr. Gulick, representative, any report?
Well, again, everything I see from PSBA, just about everything is COVID-related and kids need to get back in school and we're ahead of the curve on that one. In fact, I think it's 80% of kids still are not in their school buildings. So the fact that we can have a discussion about curriculum and programs of study and all that is just extraordinary. So we're ahead of the curve. It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Any new business? Okay, full member remarks. Mr. Velez.
Why don't you start to share?
Okay. Congratulations to the retirees and then to Kristen for the new business manager.
Congratulations to Amanda Sam Brennan and the entire Panther Press staff, Mrs. Hetrick as well. Great job by everybody, I know you guys are a keen job and it's great, great work that you're doing. I'd like to wish Hunter Robinson well at the state wrestling tournament, good luck to him. Sagertown girls basketball lost by two points, but they had a great season and I'm proud of them. Good luck to the Cambridge team as they move on. I just wanted to address real quickly Mrs. Hetrick's comments on the libraries. I was thinking when the libraries started to go away, at that time they were still exchanging books, but it wasn't as often as it had been previously. And I have to admit, I was not aware that it had gotten to this point. And I hope my colleagues and I can, excuse me, can have a discussion, because I think that needs to change. It won't be overnight, it won't be drastic, but I think that's something that we really should address and I thank you for bringing it to our attention. Okay? And good luck to the retirees, especially our student board secretary. And congratulations to the new hires.
Welcome.
Thank you. You took a lot of my stuff, that's good stuff.
Yes.
That was a little long-winded.
I still got a lot here. I've got several pages here, I'll try to keep it brief. It is great to be back to normal in a lot of aspects here, particularly in Panther Press. It's easy to lose perspective on the work that the administration's done to keep our schools open statewide, the stats that were shared with the board. Only 24% of schools are full in-person learning statewide. I think it's easy in our Crawford County bubble to not not see that there's a lot of places that are still closed all the time, 32% of schools, there's more schools that are fully virtual than fully open. So that's something to, you know, we've worked really hard as a board, as an administration, to try to keep things as open as we can. Boys' basketball, Cambridge's in the District 10 final versus Kennedy Catholic, Sagertown boys made the playoffs. Girls' basketball, three of our teams made the playoffs, which is impressive, Cambridge still alive versus West Middlesex. Wrestling, we had five kids make it to super regions district-wide, two from Cambridge, three from Sagertown. And that would normally be the state round is what we would call it, but they added an extra round of super regions. So that's impressive, we still have one alive. And everyone that's wrestling this weekend is medaled, so Hunter's guaranteed a medal, they're just gonna go down there and sort out if he's, you know, who's getting second behind Hunter. I think that's nice of them to do that. It's nice when I saw our list of volunteer coaches, you see so many Panther Press alumni, that's one thing that's, something that I love about Panther Press is we have people that are dedicated to the district. And to see so many kids come back and volunteer their time to help in all the programs that are up there is impressive. And the Panther Press, just another kudos to you guys. There's not another, there's not another school newspaper that does what you guys do. I really think you've raised the level for all of the schools in our district and in our area. And when I see the kids come in here, the dedication during the pandemic and everything, the Panther Press coming in and giving updates every single month. Or really, well, much more organized than my thoughts when you sent them in, recorded, you know, it was very impressive. And all the journalism, you know, it's all the things we want over kids to learn to think, evaluate information, package check, be responsible for their words, and be creative. So thank you very much for that.
I'm very proud of all of our kids, the sports, they impress me immensely. I congratulate Ms. Hetrick and her students, they've come to us to represent in our school. And I really appreciate the confidence that the kids have when they come for, speak before the board. I know the first time I spoke in front of a crowd wasn't much bigger than this, looked like somebody dumped a bucket of water up my house, sweating like crazy. So I'm impressed with the kids and their confidence, they've done a great job. Like to congratulate our retirees, our new hires, and like to thank our administration and staff for keeping things smooth smoothly through this. It was a tough decision for us, but it was a needed decision to get these kids back into school.
Good. Brian?
I want to say congratulations to Panther Press too for the good work they've been doing. I want to thank Ms. Hetrick for her concern with the library, I would like to see what we can do about that also. I didn't realize that they kind of just completely went from the wayside there. For Mark Guro, hopefully he gets his recovery and for Luigi to feel better and that's all I got.
Okay.
It's all you.
A lot of it's been said, but of course, thank you, Ms. Hetrick and her students, you guys continue to impress. Very proud of everything you've done and thank you for it, for our retirees, especially Dinah, we miss you. We thank you all for all of your time and welcome to the new hires. Something that I just had reason to really think about this week especially. I'm so proud of what our district's been doing. I think sometimes it's very easy, especially when things are hard, to focus on what's not happening in the district or changes that maybe are not happening quickly enough, because we all have our, we all have our sticking points and things that we focus on. I think so much has improved and there's so many strides being made as a district, but I'm proud of that and I really want to focus on those things. Not that we need to be blind and not pay attention to, there's always improvement, but considering the kind of year that we've had and how far we've come and now that we feel like we can all just kind of take a little bit of a break because things are getting to some sort of, we're seeing students back in the buildings and sports moving forward and being able to kind of get out there a little bit more than they have been. Even as a community, I saw a note today that nursery rooms are always starting to allow visitors again. That to me was such a relief, that's just normal community practices. I would just like to encourage the district and the students and the parents to just try to focus on the positive and if you have any positive feedback, share it in a positive way, because nobody is different right now. So, thank you all. That's it.
Well, I know what Mark and Luigi always, well, not Luigi, Mark, not much left to say. I do want to say thank you Panther Press, always enjoy hearing, listening to you guys and it's just awesome to see everybody here tonight and it just shows sign of reality again. Senator Brooks, thank you very much for all your help. To the new hires, welcome, can't wait to work with you. To retirees, Dinah, sadly missed, thank you for all that you've done for us, appreciate it. And to all the sports across the board, I mean, Panther Press is really making a good showing across the board, that's awesome. And I will reiterate though, seeing our kids back in school and if you watch the news at all, which I try not too much anymore, but seeing what other districts around the country are doing, Panther Press is kind of setting standards and it's awesome, but also we can't be complacent, we have to put our foot on the throttle and we have to keep going, we have to go on a ground and backup. So we can't say that as a board or as a district. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Now, just one announcement, we had executive session on March 8th and 11th for personnel and litigation.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Before board leaves, I need you for like two minutes, so. Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.